Let me go ahead and call the work session to order. This is, we have a work session agenda. We started that last month of having two separate agendas, one for the work session, one for the regular meeting. The regular agenda, if you have questions on it that you want to discuss, let's look at that first. So, there are several things on the regular agenda that's on the work session agenda also, but if there's anything not covered in the work session agenda that's on the regular agenda, let's look at it first and then we'll go into the work session agenda. And we will be having an attorney-client meeting at the end of the work session and we'll mark off some of the items on the work session agenda when we get down to those. But at this point, let me know if there's something on the regular agenda that you would like to have discussed before we go into the work session.
Just a minute please. I didn't think a little bit about that stuff.
Pardon?
I said I didn't look at them until just now, so if you could give me just a minute.
Okay. And if there's something we need to move from work session agenda on to regular agenda, we can do that as we proceed through this. So at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Cox to discuss the work session agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and welcome everybody back into your board room. I'm excited to be back and I was trying to think how long it's been. I think it was a year ago February when we were last in this space and so it feels good to be back. So, and I think, Dr. S, this is your first time in here, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
All right, very good. We'll go ahead and proceed. We do have a lot of things to talk about this evening, but we have a guest here. Amber Torbett is here and she's going to talk to us a little bit about the prospect of a walking path that would connect Sullivan East Middle School to Sullivan East High School. And so she has some information to share for your consideration and I'm going to just turn it over to her for a brief presentation.
Okay, great. I assume you want me to be behind the mic?
It's fine.
Okay. So I didn't bring my whole easel, but I do have a map that I really would like to show you. I'm just going to assume you all have heard about the Over Mountain Victory National Historic Trail that goes through the heart of the east zone of Sullivan County. It is a protected trail by the National Park Service, just like the Appalachian Scenic Trail that everybody knows about the 18. The difference is, the Over Mountain Trail is primarily on public lands, private lands, state lands. And so, when we learned about this trail going through the heart of the east zone, after studying everything that I could on my own and through their guidance, in 2018, the National Park Service decided it was time to do a master plan to ensure that every community, every partner, wouldn't just do their own thing and not have a connection. And so, you've all heard of Kings Mountain, you've been to Sycamore Shoals, you've been to Rocky Mount. Every community along the 330-mile corridor has their section of physical trail on the ground to some degree. We have only one mile certified right now from the Swinging Foot Bridge in Bluff City to the Bluff City Middle School. And the new owner of the Bluff City Middle School is still excited. It's a certified site, he's going to do some improvements, so we're happy about that. So we, the county has secured a few grants over the years with the National Park Service and we've whittled away at making those trail improvements on either side of the footbridge. And every time I drive my son to school, I love seeing people down there, they're fishing, they're parking, they're looking at the wayside signs. And the highway department has, and the county maintenance department has maintained our side and the city of Bluff City has maintained their side. It's been a very, it's been a great project for partnerships and something positive. But what I wanted to talk to you about tonight is to update you on the potential of Patriot Park. So, I like to focus on public lands first and get community support and as more and more residents learn of the Over Mountain Victory Trail, you know, then they'll hopefully buy it. And we have had a lot of community support. In 2018, the National Park Service, along with many of our local partners, hired a consulting firm out of Boone, North Carolina called Destination by Design, and they prepared this master plan, which I'll get to you in just a sec to pass around. But it lists all of the partners, those that helped pay for this plan were, obviously the National Park Service paid about 80% of the cost of a $100,000 plan. Now, you're seeing a document, but you know how plans are, they're very costly to study and produce and do all the meetings and so forth and the GIS work. Sullivan County was a major, the second major partner, Bluff City, Elizabethan, Bristol MPO, which is our transportation board, Eastman, East Tennessee Foundation, Carter County, and Rocky Mount, and the Over Mountain Victory Trail Association. I'm going to pass this around, you all can thumb through it. I can send it electronically, although it is a zip file, there's a lot of data in it. But I printed out some highlights for you all of what I wanted to update you today to focus on for today. And if you don't mind to take one and pass it, I think I, hopefully I made it, it's front and back. And basically, the opportunity that I was discussing earlier was Patriot Park being that 15-acre tract of land that you all recently purchased on the corner of Weaver Pike and Harrington Hollow is what was earmarked and highlighted in this master plan. And so obviously that just, when the consultants came up with that idea in coordination with your all's architects on the school, it, I just got so excited for this possibility. So, as you can see in the exhibit, this is just a concept plan. So all the engineering, of course, has not been studied at length as far as topography and so forth. But we now have a sewer line running from the new middle school to the, near the high school. And sewer lines have easements and many communities use those easements for their trails. And plus, Weaver Pike is a state route road, so we are eligible for TDOT funding for this trail. And so I ran it by the engineers, Rex Montgomery and Dave Metzger with the city of Bristol's MPO Transportation Planning Board. They said it was a great project and the school department and the county wanted to pursue this. The best grant that we could think of that would minimize local match and maximize funding would be, it's called the multimodal access grant. I'm currently in the middle of a multimodal access grant for Blountville. That is our trip, a sidewalk project from the historic structures to the intersection right here at Blountville Bypass with a roundabout and ending at the library. That's just shy of a mile-long sidewalk, ADA compliant with crosswalks, roundabout safety signage, the whole nine yards. That is a million-dollar project, less than a mile with the roundabout and all the ADA requirements, but the county commission only had to commit $50,000. And so a 5% match is up to a million-dollar total grant. I have found is the cheapest way to go to be able to put in either sidewalks or walking trails. If you do a walking trail, you can follow the lay of the land and it has to be a 10-foot wide pavement strip. If you do a sidewalk, it follows the contours of the road and it has to be 5-foot wide concrete. So the multimodal access grant is an opportunity that comes around every year that communities can apply for with TDOT as long as it is on a state route road and Weaver Pike is a state route road. So it would not pay for improvements at Patriot Park, that's where the National Park Service and the county would get involved, but the connecting the two schools together from the trailhead at Harrington Hollow through a bike tunnel and then coming up the ride of way and ending up at the upper parking lot by the Old Hicks Historic School. There's actually a trailhead there called the Campus Mile. All the old alumni of Sullivan East remember the Campus Mile. There are literally mile markers behind the field paths. It's grown up, probably has weeds we need to tend to, but cross-country runners use students. And so we would tie into that. This proposed route not only connects the two campuses together so the students and athletes can utilize and share, you know, sports facilities, but also be open to the community as a safe way of getting from one campus to the other. It just so happens to be on the historic route, the Over Mountain Victory Trail. So, I just have to share it with you and keep all of that. If you want to keep the master plan and return it to me later, that's fine. I have it all on the computer, it's just not something you can email because it's such a large file. And I'll also leave this plan, we took the proposed mapping that the consultants did and recreated it in our GIS and it highlights those exhibits, but it also shows a potential Patriot Trail. For obvious reasons, I've called it Patriot Trail, you can call it whatever you want, but the Over Mountain men were patriots and Sullivan East are patriots. So, it does seem fitting and it's a lot easier to say than the Over Mountain Victory National Historic Trail. The primary route of the historic route is certified by Congress in the early 80s, goes through the Old Campus Mile of Sullivan East High School. And it makes its way down through Fort Womack. If you're familiar with Fort Womack, we certified that site, I believe, in 2015. It is privately owned, but it's been in a family for over 100 years and Ms. Childress has always welcomed, we've had deal trips there and. It's a certified site and so we want to connect the dots. The Over Mountain men encamped at Fort Womack on September 24th. That was the original fort of the North Holston Settlement before we were Sullivan County. And so that's right off Silver Grove Road. So conceptual Patriots' Trail would link the two schools together, run down property lines, and end up at the Swinging Foot Bridge. That's a long-term dream, but the immediate goal is to connect the two schools together with a safe walking trail. And rather than a crosswalk on Weaver Pike, the consultants are proposing the bike tunnel. It would be costly, but given the, there's just less maintenance and, you know, no kid will get hurt. So, crosswalks are nice if people abide by the rules of the road. You know, as a parent, I observe cross-country runners running from campus to campus. And they run in a huddle and I know they're safe, but it is Weaver Pike. So for a safety, accessibility, and just an improvement to the community, as well as creating a space commemorating the Over Mountain Victory Trail, I think it satisfies all of those goals and I'd be glad to help in any way if that's something that you all would love to plan for. Typically, the multimodal access grant, you apply in the early fall. It's already on the Bristol MPO Transportation Plan Improvement. Then you obviously would want an engineering consultant to help you with budgeting and things like that. There are consultants that are already TDOT qualified that we have used that know the whole start to finish. And if you're awarded the grant, then you have five years to complete the project. Everyone asks me, "Where's the sidewalk on Main Street in Blountville? What's taking so long?" Well, you have to go through an environmental process and if you know Blountville, it's on an archaeological heritage site because of the Battle of Blountville Civil War. So we had to do some extra archaeological studies. This you would not have to do. This would be the standard environmental review, not a full NIFA. But that's all I know based on my experience working with TDOT on several other grants and this particular one for Blountville. And I just wanted to share with you so you had all the info. And I will leave this to you. Again, this is conceptual, but it's something that I would be glad to help out.
Can you answer a question?
Of course.
Do you have any idea on the timetable, the timetable on the walkway from, that crosses under the road and gets the students back and forth between the two schools? What's the, what's your best guess?
Well, I measured it in feet in GIS. So if you were to do from the trailhead at Harrington Hollow, what I like to call Patriot Park, under the bike tunnel and then up the ride of way and come out at the, what I think is still a trailhead at the Old Hicks School, that is only .18 of a mile. So less than a quarter of a mile, it's about 1,000 feet walking, measured in GIS. Now, that's not, you know, engineered, that's just in our measurement in GIS. If you drove right now, which I do all the time, from the athletic parking lot at Bluff City Middle, or Sullivan East Middle School, around to the entrance, back up Weaver Pike and to the East High Campus, that's 4,400 linear feet. So about an eighth of a mile drive. So that's what the students, the long-distance runners are running right now, an eighth of a mile on the roads and parking lot. But if you did the walkway and the bike tunnel, you're looking at less than a quarter of a mile.
You gave us some drawings about a year or more ago?
Yeah.
Are they still, still kind of what's envisioned?
Yes.
You gave us, you gave us a drawing of the tunnel and so forth?
Yes.
I still have, I still have those.
Yes, yeah. And so all that was, I mean, your architect and the park service design consultants, their landscape architects, came up with this idea. I'm not claiming Patriot Park, but I'm certainly running with it until someone tells me no. It's such a beautiful opportunity. The, one other thing before I go, the National Park Service did commit $1,000 for a wayside interpretive sign at Patriot Park. And so, the goal is, you know, I've designed the other signs in-house and then the park service fabricates it and the county installs it. And we have two of these wayside signs on either side of the Swinging Foot Bridge at our certified site. So if you haven't, check those out, look at those, that's our work. I'm very proud of those signs and that's what they've committed a budget for, for this federal fiscal year. So I have to commit to this sign or we lose it. And so I'm hoping that that's okay, that we can do this wayside sign, I'll obviously run it by you all, but it would be on school property. So, the goal is to put it at the top where the softball fields, the end of the current sidewalk at the Sullivan East Middle School. It's basically the entrance to Patriot Park for the students. So it would, you know, the construction company, makers left all those boulders for us as a kind of an entrance feature for Patriot Park. And that's where I would like to install this interpretive sign and unveil it with the students and the National Park Service and the reenactors on September 24th of this year, if we're allowed to do a, pick up where we left off with our annual onsite program.
That was going to be my next question. Are you going to continue this next September?
Oh, yeah.
With the, and the other, the other, last question. What do, what do you need from the board? How can the board assist and what do you need from us?
Yeah, so if you are interested in applying for a multimodal access grant, as I researched the cheapest way to accomplish the walking trail, it would, what we would need is a TDOT pre-qualified engineer to come up with a budget. They usually do this pro bono, at least they did for us for Blountville Sidewalk Project. Mattern and Craig is our engineer right now out of Kingsport. And they did, they helped me with the application and the budgeting. So you really need to know how much it would cost for less than three-quarter. The bike tunnel would be obviously the most expensive because you have to bore under Weaver Pike and make it structurally sound, but, you know, people do this all over our country and it's a safe way to move people without traffic conflict. That would be the first thing, Mr. Hughes, is to work with a local engineering company willing to help us with the budget so that we are ready and prepared when the application is due this fall or whatever cycle you want to work with. And anything else you need from me along the way, you know, we'll do all the mapping and anything like that, so.
Just, just a curious question. When we first started talking about it, I mean, I liked the idea of having a path from the two schools and that part of it's great. The only concern I have is having a park right beside the school with the park controls being what they are, I mean, it's going to be really hard in my mind to do the safe, have those two entities beside each other because the park allows anything and everything and the school shouldn't. So we're not together. So I actually asked the sheriff how we would be able to do that. So I'd really like to get them involved to tell us how we're going to keep this safe because having a path for kids is fantastic, but having a path for the kids that has no controls and anybody can be there and we can't control it is, I'm not a huge fan of that. So I'd really like to make sure that we can do this safely or I'm not, not really a fan of it.
That's a good point. Patriot Park, obviously, is school property and most schools are fenced in especially after hours. You know, some campuses, at least, you know, the track is open for the community so parents can get some exercise, which is nice if you can separate that and have different access. The overall master plan for Patriot Park does call for a secondary entrance off Harrington Hollow to get to the new middle school. It's always wise to have two entrances if you can, you know. And so, even if it's on the same road, just for traffic movement. But if you gated off and let Patriot Park be gated off as it currently is, I think it's just a farm fence that, you know, extend the fencing that the school put up, you know, then it could just be open for outdoor classroom education, which is proposed for the students during their recreation time and after-school athletics, sports. The bike tunnel could be left open because that is a state route, but you could have the gate at the trailhead off Harrington Hollow be gated. So you could still have a trailhead, public viewing area, because they show a whole map kiosk with historical maps and routes and historical information. That could be left open to the community, but the park itself leading back up to the ball fields could be, the gates could be expanded.
Just, I've only looked into this a little bit and I mean, you're much more versed than I am, but with the multimodal access grant, doesn't that tire our hands a bit? Because we're saying we're going to allow a lot of access and different, I mean, it seems like that's going to not allow what you're saying with the fencing and the blocking off and the controls, so.
So as long as the, the trail would be in the ride of way on Weaver Pike, not on that church property. And so that's the beauty of Weaver Pike, it's a very large ride of way and I'm thinking that it could go over the sewer easement because after the bike tunnel, it's on the high school side, the sewer. And so, at least that's what Bristol told us in their GIS. So potentially you could share that easement in the ride of way and then come out at East High Campus, which is already gated after hours. The bike tunnel itself, you're just looking at the ride of way that could be open to the public, you know, well-lit. But then where it comes into what Sullivan East Middle School campus could then be gated and fenced just like the rest of the campus. So that could only be possibly open during after-school sports.
Is the multimodal just for, is the multimodal just for the path?
Just for what's in the ride of way, yes, not the improvements on private property, which is school property. That would have to be picked up through National Park Service grants. And the National Park Service has gone through a series of super tenants. They have been restructuring, they've worked from home, they, they're very helpful, we've had a lot of success with grants over the years with them. The gentleman I worked with for years moved on to Will Mary and, and other national parks or federal parks. And they have a new person and she just got in on this. So, we're competing with all the other partners along that 330-mile segment. And so they do, they are funded, they do, they just haven't released their grant opportunities this cycle.
Is there?
Other than the $1,000 for the sign we're going to get.
Last thing and I promise I'll.
Oh, no.
Is there a possibility of getting the sheriff's office involved in this? We can actually, because I'm really concerned about the, the safety of that.
Yeah.
So I mean, if it's, if we need somebody that would sit back and say, "It'll be great", I'm great with it.
Yeah.
If we, I would just like to get their opinion because they are the.
Yeah. So.
I give my opinion.
Absolutely. I mean, the safety of the kids is first and foremost and I know that a lot of campuses are locked down after the sporting event is over. Some campuses, such as the track, might be left open, which we parents love. But I understand the concern, but I think there's so much ride of way to get the actual trail connection and then from the school property on be fenced in like the rest of the ball fields. You would just have to, I mean, you own it now, if you do anything with it, I suppose it would have to be fenced in anyway.
Can I just interject? I've thought about your concerns, you know, and the track up there now is open.
Right.
We, you know, when you go, when you go up there in the afternoon, a lot of people utilizing the track to walk. They are some of our best caretakers, they watch out for the property when they're there. And I think that the benefits that we would get from having a safe walkway for the students from east to the middle school and the other direction would outweigh any, any concerns that you'd have on that campus. I mean, we allow it now, it's our property, we control it. And so I, I think all of your concerns, I think the, the safety that we would gain by having a safe access for up and down that road. And we had a student in 1969 or '67 that was killed right there on that Weaver Pike, walking from Sullivan East after a football game to the Little Market up there. So, that's how I think about those concerns you have.
And I mean, just, just to say on that, and I understand what you're saying, I really do, because all the people up there and, I mean, at the high schools, they're everywhere, there's a lot of people there. But if they see something that they don't like, they can call the police and the police can get there and there's controls on our property that can't be on National Park property.
No, this is always your property.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, the National Park.
Even with the multimodal?
No. The National Park Service doesn't own any of the trail except at Kings Mountain. Sycamore Shoals owns theirs, Carter County owns, or Elizabethan owns their trail.
So their rules will not apply?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it is a, it is a state grant, the multimodal is a. The multimodal is a state grant, not a federal grant. That's the nice thing about that. But you know, what's in the state's rideaway, you have to keep open. You know, if you're going to spend public tax dollars, that's the whole point. Just as a parent of Sullivan East kids, I'm there every day and when I drop my boys off, I, I miss having the track open at East High Campus right now. It's under construction because I would be there waiting on them, you know, walking and running around the track. So I know a lot of folks walk around Luntville Middle School track and so it's surrounded by a neighborhood. There are new homes being built around Sullivan East Middle School, which we love to see. And I think it'll, with the sewer line, it'll even grow more, more folks out there. But that's up to you. I think those are all workarounds that may be addressed by the engineer and, but yeah, no, Patriot Park would always be school property, under your control.
Thanks. I'm actually really glad we had that conversation because that was one of my things is like, if we do that, it'll fall under the National Parks rules and, okay, but, okay, fantastic.
And I will add one more thing. I know you all have a busy agenda. When you get a site certified, they no longer certify private property. So we got Fort Wall Mac certified in time. It is still private property, but it is a historic site on the national master plan. They would no longer do that now. So we're, we're lucky that Fort Wall Mac is certified, but at any time it's private property. Then the next generation may not like that. So we get more credit, we get more attention, more grant opportunities when you build trails on, and certified sites on public property. And so we've, we've had a lot of success down by the footbridge. That's open every day. The swinging footbridge is maintained by the county highway department, open every day. They maintain it when we get a call. People are there every day putting lots of love on the fencing and I, I just, I love that. So it's for the community and yeah, the more people use it, the safer. I can leave this with you all as well. Just keep in mind, it is conceptual, so lines can change. We just tried to follow information that we knew. And I'll go home empty-handed.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torbit. So proceeding on with the work session agenda, item three is Sullivan East High School baseball field explanation. I'm going to ask Mrs. Rafalowski to take point on that discussion. We have had a couple of meetings of our extracurricular committee and so I think it kind of folds into that. So Ms. Rafalowski, would you talk to us a little bit about that, please?
Absolutely, and good evening, Board. It's just a brief report. We are currently working with Danine West, our architect, who is actually doing some work, at least some extensive work, as you all well know. We have lots of dirt being moved, we have a turf football field going in, and she is going to do some additional work for us there and help us prepare to review that drainage system and look at that more in-depth. Thank you.
Thank you. Item four is a COVID stipend for employees. If you recall, last time I, I gave you this before the meeting and we talked about it just a little bit individually, but I will be asking for board action on this item this coming Tuesday on May 4th. So the basic concept is outlined, there's an attachment to your agenda, but I'll go through it briefly, I know you can read. But the, the premise of this is several school systems around the state and particularly in our area are doing something very similar to this. And it is to give a stipend. We're proposing a thousand dollars for each full, for each employee who's been in our employ since the beginning of the year, who has worked more than four hours a day. And then $500 for each employee who has worked four hours or less for the whole year or who joined our employee on January 1st of this year. And then $250 for anyone who may have worked four hours or less that began at the beginning. And so the, the, also the provision is any employee that's had unpaid leave during the year would get a prorated stipend and that would be figured out in our payroll department. So there are two proposed funding sources for this. One, as you'll recall, the state provided a 2% raise for the BEP instructional employees. And again, that was generated only for the BEP-funded positions. You can only spend those dollars for employees in that category. Obviously, we have more employees in that category that are funded alone by the BEP, but the total of that allocation provided by the state is $366,500. That can be used only on those employees. So the breakdown there is, that, that comes to about $563 for, for those employees. What I'm recommending is that we would use CARES 2.0 funding to boost that particular group to 1,000 for the balance of that and the cost to CARES. So that's $365,502. And then 100% of all other employees would be funded through CARES at 626. Now, if you add those two together, you get $991,000, but I need to qualify this. This is an outside number. It does not factor in any of the, of the payments that would be less than $1,000. So that's an outside cost, it would actually be less. And that would be, of course, more accurately calculated for payroll. This, this would be intended for the employee's last check or electronic payment, however they get paid, for the end of the school year. And so because we have different payroll cycles for different classifications of employees, they would actually be different days, but it would actually be their last for this, for this school, for, for this school year. And so if you have questions, there's a link and it, there's a description there linked about who generates the 2% from the BEP Blue Book. But we have been in touch with Eve Carney in the State Department and have consulted with, with, with her about this and as a result have amended our CARES 2.0 so that, that we could provide this funding. So again, I'm, I'm making this as a recommendation and would ask the board to approve this at the May 4th meeting this coming Tuesday. So I will pause here and see if there are any questions. I know Mr. Loach is, is on the line and so we also have other staff members who can help us. Ms. Buckles is here, who has worked extensively with our CARES issues as well.
The money that we had dedicated in CARES for other items, if we take out almost a million dollars, we're going to move that to CARES 3. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, Mr. Jones. So we've talked, we have at this point three different CARES funding pots. We have been approved for one, two. We can amend those at any time, just like we can any other federal grant. But the, the intent and plan is that the, that we wouldn't, we would move those projects into 3.0. The deadline for that grant has been moved twice. The first was June 1st, it was moved to July 15 and now it's moved to August 1st. There are some additional federal requirements. They have actually taken the application down to amend their application and E-plan. So yes, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
So just so I understand, I, I think I do now with that, but the reason we moved instead of using CARES 3.0 is because we're still in the process of getting the approval on that?
Yes, so we have, we've been, we, Mr. Irons, we've been approved for, for 2.0, we can amend it. If we were to wait for approval, especially since it's been pushed out to August, then you know, you wouldn't be able to do it within this year.
Great, I did, thank you.
This, this gets the money to the teachers and other staff members quicker?
Yeah, makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. All right, moving on then to item five, we had a presentation at a previous work session last time concerning dual litigation, so I'm going to turn it over to our attorney. I think he has some comments about that. Mr. Hall?
Well, I, at the last meeting, I said I would review the contract that they had proposed and had the opportunity to do that. It's my recommendation that we discuss that in a, an attorney-client session. That it is obviously related to pending legal matter and then, of course, you would vote on it at the next meeting, pending the result of, of our attorney-client meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Hall? All right. Moving on then to item six on the work session agenda is, is recommendation to request a school number for our virtual learning academy. So just very briefly, Ms. Rafalowski is going to talk a little bit about that in a little bit more detail, but as you recall, we, we are operating our virtual learning academy under the CLP or the Continuous Learning Plan. What we've been told by the state is to operate a, a program like VLA or it's considered to be a school, we would have to apply for a school number. The deadline for that is June 1st and so we would ask the board to give us the authority to apply for a school number so that we would have it by the deadline to submit to the study. So Ms. Rafalowski is going to talk a little bit about that because she's been very involved in the planning for next year.
And I apologize for any repetition. In an effort for preparedness of any and all scenarios we may encounter in our future, we are asking for approval to apply for a school number for a virtual learning academy. Currently, we feel that we can serve our student population that has shown an early interest in a VLA setting. The State Department has allowed us to operate a VLA without a school number until this point, but will mandate a school number beginning in 2122. The application for a school number does not necessi, does not necessitate or indicate that we will be making that recommendation in the future, but it does give us the option if we ever choose to exercise it. The application is due by June 1 and that is the reason for the request.
I have a question. Last year when, when we, when we went virtual, I, I read a little bit on what the law requires if we have a number. It's been a year or two, but is part of that we have to provide certain services like internet and those type of things or?
If we have a school number, we have to operate that school just like one of our schools. So the answer to that question would be yes. And again, what I would say there, having a school number doesn't mean you have to utilize it, it doesn't mean that we are entering into that. It just simply states in a world of unknowns right now, that if we did encounter a situation where we got to that point, we have something to fall back on. Currently, in our process of looking at next year, looking at our staffing, we feel like we don't have to exercise that. But again, we have three months prior to school starting and the future, as you all, much better than I, have participated in those decision-making things that have come forth in the past two years. It's just one thing that we can have in our back pocket in case we ever need it.
So if we're operating it as a VLA program right now, should there be, and we can do that without a school number, should we need it then in the future, we could automatically move to a, a separate entity?
If we, if we had mass numbers or that was something that we felt like we had to consider.
Right. So we wouldn't have to go back to the state and ask for exceptions or?
We would not. And with the deadline being June 1, that's the reason that we're making this request this fall.
This is a safety net for us then if we need it?
That's basically what it is.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
With, with the changes after we get a number, if we decide to go to VLA at that point, you say they don't have to be like one of our regular schools, we'll have to have a principal, we'll have to have staff, but we will have to have a location?
You, you would have to do several things.
So, I mean, so, but it changes the rules of everything, but it still allows us an option.
It depends on the size.
Okay.
That you would want to look at as far as a virtual learning academy would go. There would be a lot of questions that we would have and certainly we would explore prior to ever coming back to this board with that being a recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rafalowski. Next, I'm going to call on Dr. Plummer to talk to us a little bit about a two-year math gap plan. He's going to explain the adoption cycle and the changes of the state and the reason that we need a gap plan. So, Dr. Plummer?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Board, for your time. Appreciate it. I'll move quickly. You have the finances on this as well as the slideshow that I'm going to present to you today, so I will move quickly just to clarify some things in our request and if you have any questions, of course, at the end, please feel free to ask. So as Dr. Cox just mentioned, the state has, there's been some things the state has done. They've moved back the purchase of materials by two years and it's demonstrated in the slideshow that you have and is presented here. We're currently using what we refer to as the HMH digital platform. That's what we currently have in high school math. As the state has pushed back the purchase of those materials for two years, as you can see there, that would mean we wouldn't have new materials for the 2122 or the 2223 school year. We still have the books, but the, but the digital support that goes along with those books and, and all that would, would cease for the, for the teachers to use. And so that being a concern, I put together a committee of teachers to discuss what our options might be. I did get a teacher from each of the high schools to have this discussion, so I thought we were well represented. The choices were do nothing, go with books only, or look for new materials. Of course, in COVID, in a COVID era, not knowing what to expect and knowing that everything that we've gone through has required so much digital support, they were overwhelmingly, you know, in, in favor of looking at new material. And so venturing into that, we, of course, looked into ed reports. We've all seen the ed reports before as we've presented in the past with other curriculum. We went there and started with, with their information. This is our current text, actually, that we are currently, that we are using. This is the HMH. Seeing this, the teachers felt like we can find something that's stronger for our students. And so being excited about that, we found two curriculums that, that we felt like were really very strong. This one from Kendall Hunt and this one from Savis called Envision. These are the two curriculum that we landed on that we felt like were extremely strong for our teach, teachers and for our students. We did request presentations from each of those companies. They came and spoke to our, our teachers and presented, our teachers went back to their schools, presented that information to the teachers. The teachers discussed, voted on it and were very excited about those two, those two curriculums in particular and the, the Savis was the overall winner. So with that being said, today I'm making the request, the math committee and I are making a request for your approval for the purchase of these curriculums. And really just for the one, the Envision is what we're looking at. And for the supplemental, supplemental materials for the next two years, you have the finances for those materials, for the curriculum. The material that we're requesting purchase for is for Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. The upper-level math teachers, we did speak to them about how they felt about what they had and where they were and they were, they were okay with what they have right now and are looking forward to two years. And they were, they were okay with what they have right now or looking forward to two years from now. The, when we get there, they, they said that they would be more interested in looking at something else. But right now, they're fine with what they have. This is for Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. And really, that's it besides just sharing with you the names of the folks, the dates which, which we had the meetings for the discussion. And, and that's everything. That's the presentation. What questions do you have there, Mr. Jones?
This is not a math adoption, my rec.
You are correct. Matter of fact, the state was very emphatic to say this cannot be
Right.
a math adoption. This is simply material.
I want to clarify that, that it is just for purchase of supplemental materials.
Correct.
What's the total cost? I saw, was it 112,000 or did I?
Yes.
And where is this 100, where is this 112,000 coming from?
Yes, sir, three.
Yes, sir, three. And it's out of the 20% learning loss that we are required to have. Is that correct?
You're correct.
So it's, it's nothing out of general purpose. It will be coming from the
Correct.
federal money that we have to give for learning loss anyway, so.
Yes, sir.
It's not like we're taking from one thing to purchase this?
That's exactly right.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Good questions.
So I'm, I'm guessing I'm right on this, but I'm kind of curious. With both of them saying high school, Kendall Hunt being rated so much higher, you're getting both because they're different subjects or is it?
We're getting one. We're purchasing one. The other text, the, the Kendall Hunt is free.
Okay.
So there's no, there's no purchase involved. So.
So what does the other give us that Kendall Hunt doesn't?
An extraordinary online platform.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions for Dr. Palmer? We, we will be asking the board to approve this request. It's actually item 7D under new business on your agenda for next Tuesday.
That led me to one question, extraordinary online platform. Do students have access to that as well as the teachers?
Yes, absolutely. As a matter of fact, the, the entire text is located in that online platform. The teachers have that as well as the students. This, this does come with, as you can see in the finances, a companion workbook as well.
Okay.
That, that will be a handwritten, I mean, they write right on it. They can use that as well. So I think it's really an extraordinary package, a curriculum, for, for our teachers and for our students.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Dr. Palmer.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
If you have any questions between now and Tuesday, please send them our way. I think Mr. Jones, would you like to speak to the next item, please?
This item is discussion of the Bishop property, which is across from West Ridge High School. We will be discussing part of this in our attorney-client meeting at the end of this meeting. But there's some things that we need to discuss prior to that legal discussion. This 8.2 acres of land is the land that we've been talking about since January or February of this year. We've made several recommendations to purchase either the land or else purchase the land with the road built on it. And this has gone to the county commission, I think, three times, and each time has been voted down. There is a few county commissioners, and I don't know the number, that have said, why don't you go back and bring it back to us again and purchase the property? And I told them I would simply put it on the agenda and ask for any comments from this particular group. Have talked with Mr. Hull about the purchase price. The purchase price that they're asking now is more than what the purchase price was in our original proposal when we were going to buy the land through the partnership grant that we were talking about. So I'm opening the floor up for discussions of whether or not you want to do anything concerning the purchase of it or whether or not we sit back and leave everything as it is now. The water was muddied a little bit last month when there was a complaint about water drainage coming from the high school onto the Bishop property. And it was further muddied when there was discussion concerning the, the right-of-way on the Bishop side of Leon Road. That the, what, the road cannot be widened according to the highway commissioner because of the limited right-of-way. And I've driven by the road several times this week. They are making some progress on widening Leon Road down to where the Bishop property starts. But the real question becomes, is there any interest in the part of the board for purchasing the land? The purchase price is approximately $300,000. And it was $260,000, I think, plus the purchase of the waiver when, back, or the right to purchase back when we made the proposal originally. And again, I don't know if we've presented anything to the county commission, if anything would be approved or not, since we've been turned down three times. But there are a couple commissioners, if not more, that have asked to, for us to consider doing that again. But if we purchase the property, the question then becomes, what are you going to do with it? Are you going to build a road or propose another road that we proposed initially? And now I'm not proposing anything. I'm not recommending any particular action on this. But if the board decides to make a motion, then ask us to do something, I will proceed with Mr. Hull to work on that. But if there's no action taken, then we will simply discuss in our attorney-client privilege meeting the legal implications of what we need to. So I'll open the floor up for any discussion.
I think all my questions are going to follow under that, so I think I'll just leave.
Okay.
Do you know the why the price increased?
No, I do not. I have brought to their attention through Mr. Hull that the purchase price initially was 260,000 and that I do not think this board would, would agree to spend more than the 260,000 that they had agreed to originally. And that I didn't understand why they would sell it to one party for 260,000 and now be asking 300,000 from us. That's, I guess, pretty, as factual as I can make it without getting into any of the legal issues.
You could, you could ask for anything. I mean, we, we could make an offer too if we choose to do that, so it's.
And again, if you buy the property, do you buy it without a plan of what you're going to do with it? Or do you buy it and say, we've got eight acres? And because right now, even if we bought it, what can we do with it? Can we build a road on it? So far, we haven't been able to convince anyone that we need to do that. The only advantage to having it right now would be that we could widen the road a little bit there on the other side where the, the water is drained.
I'm afraid to ask a question. It's going to take me down the rabbit hole. I'm going to leave.
Okay.
Let me add. I guess if, if they were here, they would answer that question by saying, well, the price was 260, but there were some other add-ons. I think there was a, and I haven't gone back and looked at that contract, but I think there was maybe a, a commission or something else added to that that did make the total outlay there close to, close to 300,000. So their response would be that actually it wasn't just 260, that there were some additional amounts. And I'll, I'll, you know, I haven't researched that, but that would be probably their response in fairness.
Any other comments or discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, we, we need to own this property. I don't, I don't, it, it, this should have been done a long time ago. No matter what we do now, it's going to be late. This is a lack of county commission doing their job. But I don't know how we can go any farther than to, to buy the property and, and then have a, make a plan to have a, how to get the road after the fact. If the commissioner didn't what they're supposed to be doing, this, this, this would have been done two years ago. From my position, we, we, we need to own this piece of property. I said that when the project began, so I'm not going to change my story now. I don't think it was our place to pay for it. But the schools, we need this piece of property and that. If you go out there and look at that, that's the only place that makes sense to have a road. And however it gets done in the future, and if we fool around, so I ends up owning that piece of property, what option do we have then?
If, if that proposal is made on Tuesday night at our meeting and we have a second to vote on it, we would need to have a resolution written to take to the county commission to allow them to do the, for us to use our fund balance. And, and I'm open to that. But we need, we can't vote on anything tonight, but we need to know if there's any interest, if there's, if there's an interest in writing that resolution. It would be wise for us to have a draft resolution written for Thursday, for Tuesday night's consideration. So is there any interest by anyone else of following up with that resolution?
Yes, but I've got questions later.
Okay.
So a limited, yes.
Okay.
I'm not 100%.
So here, here's what we'll do. By Tuesday night then, we will have a draft resolution of, of some type. The last resolution that I sent over and hit write, somebody said was not well-written. So I'm going to ask for assistance on writing this resolution. And the wheres and the therefore's, if we need to do that. And we do know as of today, the purchase price was 300,000. Is that right? And again, resolution doesn't have to necessarily include the purchase price if somebody wants to, you know, do something else. But from all indications, that is what it would, would cost us. So if there's interest in doing that, we will have a resolution ready on Tuesday night that would say we'll purchase the property. And if the board approves it, we'll take it to the county commission then, asking them to give us permission to use our fund balance to pay for the property. That resolution will not include anything concerning what our future might be concerning road because that's such an unknown. I have talked with an engineer from the state at no cost, by the way, to talk about some possible suggestions and ask him to look at the, the layout of the land, to look at Henry Har Road and to look at everything we've talked about. And he is a licensed engineer working for, through the University of Tennessee. So he will be hopefully giving us some further direction. He is aware of the, the land that was for sale there. Drove by and looked at it and knows the, some of the background before going into this. So he may have some additional suggestions concerning the, the future road. What I can't get a real accurate answer on right now is where is the actual property lying? I know I've talked to Mr. Hull about it and the land's posted, so it makes it kind of hard to, to actually find that iron pin. And we need to know. Pat, if you'll try to get an answer, if they'll let us go online and go on the property and look before Tuesday so I can give you an answer of whether or not the, the old road bed that belonged to the farm, we need to know if that's part of the 8.2 acres. If the old road bed is not part of the 8.2 acres, it may not fit into any future, future road. And just for your information, if you go out there and look today, Jericho Lane, Jericho Drive, has been paved by the City of Kingsboard. That's the road that goes down to Second Harvest. It's lined, it's paved, and it looks great. It stops at Waste Management. Looks like a brand-new road. It is a two-lane road, but it's, it looks good. And you can then imagine looking across to the high school, how it would look if we had that road on the way through. But if, if there's interest, we'll have some type of resolution ready for you on Tuesday night with the intent of trying to ask for permission to use our fund balance to purchase the 8.2 acres. My understanding is that the two acres at the top of the hill where the old house is owned has already been purchased by someone else. At least it was in a, they've got a contract on it. I know that much. Other comments? And the legal parts of this that need to be discussed, we'll do it in the attorney-client privilege meeting.
So Mr. Hull, I think you have the next one. We've talked about the outstanding BTES invoices.
At the last meeting, to sort of summarize, you asked me to reach out to BTES and convey that we would be willing to pay that amount. But the board wanted an assurance that there were no additional amounts lurking out there in the background. And so I did work up a release on that that would have worked, worked that out and conveyed that. And of course, I've heard back from their attorney. And so we have, it's another legal matter. So I feel like we probably need to discuss that in the attorney-client session. And I will bring you up to date on that as well.
Sounds like that was going to be the longest meeting.
Maybe, yes, maybe.
We won't kill Mr. Gilmore with the conversation, that's it. The, sorry, Randall. The, the motion was tabled last month on the other BTES invoice. And I need to remind you that for us to vote on that, we have to remove it from the table on Tuesday night. And so that was kind of connected to this one here too indirectly. But it's, I think it's important for us to bring it back up officially off the, off the table after we voted to do that.
Any further comments or questions about either of the BTES invoice? So we'll be talking about that during the attorney-client meeting. So the item 10 is the fiscal year 2022 budget discussion. So Ms. Deloach is online and she's going to be talking a little bit with us about that. We're in a very unique kind of situation this year in that and, and all of my years of doing school system budgets have never experienced presenting an expenditure side of the budget alone. But that's, folks, that's where we are. We have partial revenue information from the county that we got, I think, on the 15th or the 14th. We, there is, there are two bills in the General Assembly that would consider a hold harmless provision. And I can't give you any details on, on that or where that is. But we do expect that perhaps, you know, by tomorrow, there may be something on that. We just got city-county split information for this current year. So I will say a boatload of thanks to Ms. Raffelowski, who has worked very hard on, on staffing issues. And as, as we know, one of the primary goals of this board is to bring teacher salaries to a regional average. And Mr. Jones led a committee effort to do that, and I think Mr. Barnes joined that early on. And so we have that information. You'll see that as a part of this budget recommendation. And also, it's anticipated that Governor Lee will have a 4% increase. You'll see that. So this evening, Ms. Deloach will present on our behalf the, the expenditure side of our budget. Once we have the revenue information, we will bring that back to you with recommendations about a balanced budget. And I will just say most likely that, that could entail a call of meeting. So Mr. Jones and I have talked about that. I can't tell you when because I can't tell you when we'll have the, the revenue information. But I, did you want?
Yeah, before she starts.
Okay. Anyway, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jones, who has some comments to make. And then as soon as he's finished, we'll ask Mr. Deloach to present the expenditure side of our budget. And we, the county has asked us for that with the Financial Management Committee to give to the Budget Committee. So we will be sharing this part of the budget with them. So we will be sharing this part of the budget with them, with the understanding that the board has seen this tonight. It's not an approved budget. It's, it's the proposed expenditure side of our budget. Mr. Jones?
As you all know, this is the first year we've ever worked under the Financial Management Plan. It was the private act that was passed last year for Sullivan County, which puts our finances under the direction of the Finance Director for Sullivan County. And they published a calendar early this year concerning when things were due, and one of the things that's due is tomorrow, April 30th, the initial preliminary-type budget. And Mr. Bailey's email asked for progress toward the budget, and he said, "I recognize that you cannot have all of your revenues in because we don't know what the state's going to give us yet. We do know what the county has proposed and what numbers they have given us." And I have pushed to say, "Let's get the expenditures listed because we pretty much know what our expenditures could be or would be if we get the salaries that we want to have under the Salary Equalization Plan." So a lot of the blame for trying to get this in right now goes on me of saying tomorrow's the deadline that they've asked for. Let's make sure that we are not the reason that the budget doesn't get approved by July the first by Sullivan County. So we don't want to drop the ball and miss any, miss any of the deadlines. But what they've asked for is simply progress toward the budget, and this is a preliminary budget. Don't consider anything in here final. Just look at it as though this is the planning stage, which Ingrid has been working on for quite a while along with Mrs. Raffelowski and Dr. Cox. So keep that in mind as we go through it. Thanks.
Mr. Loach, will you take it away, please?
Audience, this morning this afternoon, and I think I need to introduce him. He's the new senior accountant, Mr. Doug Williams. I, I can't see, but I'm assuming he's sitting in the audience. Mr. Williams started on the nineteenth, and he's been a tremendous help so far. Okay, my presentation tonight will be very brief, and it may seem a little vague, but we're really to a point where I don't have a lot of information. But I will give you what information we have and where we're at on this budget. As Dr. Cox and Mr. Jones has talked, the forecast for our revenues is really unclear so far. And we have received some local revenues from the budgeted for the 2021 year.
Ingrid, that drop in Sullivan County property tax has not been approved, right? Nothing has gone through anything except discussion in the Budget Committee? It's just Mr. Bailey's recommendation? Am I correct on that?
They have already approved the tax rate, but Mr. Bailey has sent us the revenue projections for local options, sales tax and property tax, and that was included in those projections.
Right, that's, that's just his number based on assuming that they do drop the property tax or lower the property tax?
That's correct.
Thanks.
We did receive the current county split for the 2021 revenues. We received that late yesterday, and we recognize a half a percent loss in the city-county split. Fortunately for us, all the other districts also lost students. We had, for the 2021 year, we actually lost more students than we have lost in any single year since 2002, 2003. If they had not received the same amount of loss, we would have really been hurting in the city-county split, but that was good for us. So the 2021 revenues will reflect that half a percent loss. We still don't have a BEP estimate. Dr. Cox talked about the whole harmless legislation. That'll be a huge factor. So I couldn't even tell you where that's going to fall, but I can tell you they're proposing a four percent increase in the instructional salary components. So hopefully, if that is approved at the state legislature, then we'll recognize that in our BEP estimate when we do receive it. As far as expenditures, we have recognized step increases for all employees. Professional salaries have been raised to meet the regional average salary scale, and that's for all of our professional employees. On top of that, we gave a four percent raise for all employees. We were told this week to project a two and a half percent insurance increase at January 1st, so that's in there as well. And our retirement rates have also increased just slightly. One thing that has been very good through this budget and through CARES Act, and we've been able to make the nurses full-time employees. So those nurses will be there the full school day, and they will receive full-time benefits. And I normally have all kinds of figures for you as to what we're going to have to take out of fund balance and what our totals are going to be, but I don't have that yet. I can't really give you any of that number. But I can tell you that we were given the challenge to increase teacher salaries, and this budget's going to do that. Mr. Raffelowski's worked very hard to try to manage our personnel to where we can get it manageable in our budget. So we're still working on that, still trying to get to where we want to be, but we have been able to put in for the regional average salary scale and a four percent raise for all of our employees. And that's all I have for the 2122 budget.
Board members, it's, it's critical that we recognize that that four percent raise for all employees on top of the professional salary equity plan. If we don't add four percent, the other school systems are going to be right back above us even more so. So it's, it's critical that we do the first part, the Salary Equalization Plan, and do the salaries there, and then add that four percent on top of it. And then next year, the plan would be to work on support staff salary equalization and coaching supplements and things of that nature. So, and keep in mind too, that when we do salary equalization for the professional staff, this also helps administrative pay scale, which I know I've been questioned about, what are we going to do for them? Because the administrator's salaries are based on teacher salaries and plus a supplement on top of that. So it's, it's just critical that we push, do this. It's also critical, in my opinion, that we try to keep the property tax rate up to where it is this year. Anytime you start dropping that, it's, it's dangerous because the sales tax can go down each year at least the proportion that the school system gets, and I think we get fifty percent for education, and then that's split with the City of Kingsport and, and Bristol. But if sales tax goes down, then we could end up losing money next year. So it's, it's critical to try to keep the tax rate for property up to where it was this year and not, not drop it because sales taxes are better. This may be the best year that we've ever had in now fifty years in education of getting a tax, I mean getting a salary raise for Sullivan County teachers up to where, not to where it needs to be, but toward where it needs to be. So it's, it's, and it's, it's going to take all of us pushing for that as individuals to, to get that. Thank you, Ingrid. Thank you, Ingrid.
Mr. Jones, one, one question I had, you mentioned the, the new financial management, the private act that the county passed and lobbied for at the legislature. Obviously, there's a lot of deadlines that are reciprocal. I mean, I thought that, in my recollection, and I haven't looked at it in a long time, but I thought that they had to provide us with those revenue numbers before we were even supposed to take this step under the act.
They did give us the revenue numbers, I think about two weeks ago, and the revenue numbers that they give us are based just on sales tax and property tax rate. I don't, there's another tax that they didn't give us any numbers on, but they can't provide the state numbers, and that's where we're hurting right now because the state numbers aren't there. But they, they followed their timeline of giving us what they said they would, which was sales tax numbers and also property tax. So they've given us that part, but then we're left out not having the state numbers before we can put the budget together.
And if I'm understanding Mr. Loach correctly, and I think you were trying to highlight this in your question too, in the revenue projections they gave us, instead of actually allocating more money to the school district from the increase in the local option sales tax, which is, is always fluid.
Right.
They took away from the static number of, you know, the fixed property tax rate out of the general fund to the school that is actually a more fiscally sound number for budgeting.
Right. I believe the number that one of the commissioners gave me was they took $2,250,000 out of property tax and moved it over to sales tax. So the $2,250,000 then would help lower the property tax was the purpose. They weren't, they didn't cut our total. They just cut how they seen it to us.
Right, but that would require them changing the pennies of the tax rate that go to the general fund, which was what came up at the end of the last budget cycle and was removed after much committee discussion and never voted on after a lot of people had strong opposition to that. Because my recollection is, I think that we, that has continuously dropped. Every time there is an increase in local option sales tax, the county doesn't necessarily lower taxes. They just take more money away from the school system as a percentage of the overall property tax rate.
And keep in mind that when, when this happens, it affects the school systems also when they drop the, I mean, the city school system.
Right, all, all school systems.
It's, it's, it's critical that it's not just Sullivan County, but it's Kingsport and Bristol and even, even Johnson City.
That's what I'm saying, trying to highlight as a picture, as a, as a, it's, it's decreasing the percentage of property taxes that are going towards public education. And if you look at the history, and I'm going off memory, but I'm fairly certain, that percentage has consistently dropped. With any increase in local option sales tax for our county, our property tax dollars have, the percentage of those that go to public education has consistently dropped in the last thirty years. I mean...
If, if our sales tax goes down this year, then next year, property tax would have to be raised to make up for that drop. And it would make it look like the school system was the reason for it.
Right.
When in reality, the reason is, if you drop it this year, thinking if you're always going to have high sales tax, that's, that's the reason for the...
That was my, that was what I was driving out with my, you know, the more fiscally sound number for projections is your property tax rate. You have a percentage that you base the collection on, and you have a means to go get that money legally because that's the property tax that everybody pays versus sales tax are solely driven by demand and development. And if people are going through a hard time and there's a downturn in the economy, those property sales taxes are going to be lower. And then the County Commission and the school district and every governmental entity is going to have to then turn around and raise the property tax rate when they could be more conservative and then balance numbers by offset and, you know, the increases from the sales tax.
Right.
I, I just, I'm not an economist, and, and I'm not saying they're wrong, but that just makes no common sense to consistently take away from one of your biggest public entity projects that taxes are for, the property taxes are for, to drop the percentage they receive just because the economy's doing well. The bigger question I have, and I think anybody in Sullivan County should have, is what, what, what do they plan to do with that money? Because if they project right, there's a big increase, they're going to take pennies away from the general purpose school fund. I mean, what do they plan to do with that? I think, I think it's sad if, if that's how they want to fund a jail system that they have known for decades was long overdue by taking money away from public education.
I think it's critical that each board member, you know, let your, let your county commissioner know that we need to keep the property tax revenue at least equal to what it was last year. I mean, by lowering it two million, twenty-five thousand, and I think my number is fairly close. By lowering it that much, it could really affect us two years down the road or one year down the road. And with the new reassessment this year, this is, we're, we're set for four years now with the property values. And as Matthew said, there's legal ways of collecting that money, whereas sales tax is just basically supply and demand. And I would, I hate to make up my budget based on sales tax.
Right, and I mean, not to assign any motives, but part of the reason they can't mess with that as much is by state mandated law, they have to share that portion with us, so...
Has to be fifty percent, I'm betting.
So instead of actually seeing an increase, we see a continual decrease in the overall local dollars percentage-wise that taxes are going to public education. And I think I'm going to highlight that every chance I get because the needs of public education have only gotten greater in the last thirty years and much less in the past year and a half. So it, it makes no common sense to say you support our public schools and then take dollars, pennies off the tax rate, which would very likely lead to a tax increase later. And if we have a recertification of that property tax rate, that's another opportunity to, instead of lowering property taxes, keep them the same and generate more revenue, but put it in the right places. I mean, or tell us what, what your goal is. I mean, that, that's very frustrating. The point you highlighted that that's his, that's what our finance director's projection is to just go ahead and do that without a vote. I mean, it becomes some kind of assumption. It can be very easily misunderstood by the general public when they show these numbers, but, but we're not talking about how they get there.
Right. My understanding is this goes through the Budget Committee under the new plan, and then the Budget Committee recommends to the entire commission. So if it never comes out of the Budget Committee about dropping the $2 million from us, then the county, the County Commission will not vote on that. So I'm not sure who's on the Budget Committee, but it, I think it's important to let them know. It's, it's a, a good opportunity to carry through on their promises to help raise teachers' pay because several county commissioners have said to me, "You bring us a plan, and we'll support helping raise teacher pay." And we've got a plan. Now, it takes pretty much the money we had last year on the property tax to do that plan because I think it took $3 million to bring it up to where we needed, three point three, I believe, is the number to, to make it work. But let the county commissioners that you talked with know that, and also that it's going to affect Bristol and it's going to affect Kingsport. We're all in this, all in this together. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Spock. Yeah, that, that simplifies things for a lot of people. I'd like to also mention something else that's kind of misunderstood by the public when they got their tax appraisals this past week. I noticed a lot of people thought that they had a tax increase and that a lot, a lot of people were contributing it to, to the new schools. When, I think it should be pointed out that when there's a reappraisal, which you said, is it four years or five?
I, I think they do it every four years, but it turns out to be five the way they report, I think.
Okay, but that's required every four or five years. And when they, when the appraisals increase for the, the way the law's written, the, the only way that the county can benefit is if the County Commission has a public vote and acknowledges that they're going to keep the tax rate the same. So if there's people out there that's watching this video, they should realize that those appraisals they, they got weren't tax increases. And if, even if they were, it shouldn't be attributed to those new schools. That, that money was, that money was allocated four years ago, but...
And we've been making, they've been making a payment on it for four years now, so it's...
Good point. They've been making payments on that, on that for, for, for four years already, so one thing don't have anything to do with the other. I took the time to correct a few, a few people who made those, made those comments. But everyone's instinct is, first thing that they see is, "Well, I got an increased appraisal. My taxes are going up." So I think it's important to kind of educate the, the public, and I, I appreciate what you had to say. That, that simplifies. And what, what you said to me was, you know, they had a guaranteed minimum, minimum that's coming in.
Right.
And they decided to play with that, and now, now, now there's no guarantee. And, you know, I've, I've sitting here reading, actually reading Mr. Jones's notes from 2013 that gave the history of these, of these projects, and pretty soon, these two new schools are going to need repairs. And there's going to be people saying, "Why are you not keeping, why are you not keeping the schools up?" And, and right here's a prime reason why. We have zero renovation dollars in our budget. And if they, and when they, when they make moves like this... moves like this, it, well, it's really no use to build a new school if, if you can't maintain it. You know, some of these schools, middle schools, in, in service two years and, and another year or two, we'll start needing to, to repair things on it. So thanks for that, that explanation.
Any, any further comments concerning the?
I meant to ask, and Mr. Hughes' point reminded me of it. In, in the proposed expenditures that were, you know, I know it's a rough number and that, that we're going to present, that Ingrid just went over, with, I, I hope, I assume, but I hope we're, we're going to ask for renovation money in our budget, aren't we? I mean, whether they, you know, I, I just don't think, just because they have taken it away without notice right after they passed a bond and, and it's affected Kingsport, Bristol, and the county schools, because we've had to make it up somewhere and, and have no budget, I would certainly hope, it wouldn't keep me from asking for that and more every year. And it, it seems more than reasonable to ask for, you know, what is less than half a percent of an overall budget as a renovation fund for the largest school district in our county. And, and I mean, and I think the, the cities need it as well, too, because I don't want to forget, and anybody that was in Kingsport or Bristol will remember as well, that got taken away. And then those funding bodies had to make up, you know, millions of dollars that their citizens had to pay because the county decided to cut all renovation funds. And, and we haven't had any. That, that seems to have been confused a lot, or attempted to be confused by those in favor of it by pointing to fund balances. But, you know, you can't run a system that is based on revenues by pointing at a fund balance and saying, use that. I mean, this is an operating budget, you know. We actually try to balance it, and we've been forced to balance it by using reserves repeatedly. So I, I just want to keep highlighting these things, because even when we barely pass maintenance effort, it, it had, it required the involvement of the comptroller's office, and it has been late every, every time. And so now that they're under the new financial management system, they have, you know, they can't point the finger and say, we're, we're not showing something, we're not doing something. Everybody should know they're in control from the get-go on that. So I'm going to keep highlighting it, because they're the ones that wanted it, they signed up for it. I hope it goes good, but I'm very nervous about it.
Mr. Spivey, you, you're reminding me of something as well. Since we're making reminders, we had a county commissioner spent some time making a rant the other night about our school system and our budget. And he's the very one who said that we were getting $1.9 million surplus every year, when he used to serve on the school board and should have known that $412,000 of that 1.9 million was coming from renovate, from renovation. So, and we did submit the 1.6 million. And subsequently, the county commission approved our budget with it in it. And then they sent their budget to the state and didn't fund it. So this is the body that's wanting to take over finance.
And I know that I've probably made Dr. Cox and Ingrid and Evelyn nervous over asking to go ahead and submit the budget with the expenditures, but I want to give you a positive side of thinking about doing it this way. By submitting a budget with expenditures, you are submitting a budget with what you feel you need to run the school system. Most of the time when we do a budget, we say, how much do we have to spend? And let's figure out exactly where we can budget that money. This year, it's, it's a little bit backwards. By, by doing the pay raises and putting those in, we're saying, this is, this is what we need. And I know that there's going to be some things in there that's going to be for renovation, that's central, and Sullivan Heights, the middle schools, and some, some other places. So it's critical to put in there what our needs are. And then when we get the money from the state or the budget numbers from the state, we can see how much of a gap there is. And if it's a gap of $2 million, then we know where that gap is. It's the property tax rate. So let's, let's look at it in a positive way and say, let's figure out what we need and work backwards at it, instead of saying, what do we have? Let's see how we're going to spend it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to ask a question about the professional salary, regional average.
Yes.
If I remember correctly, was that number 3.4 million dollars is what it took?
3.3 million, I believe, is slightly over 3.3 million.
So.
And that's based on Kingsport, Bristol, Johnson City, Sullivan County, Hawkins County, and I believe Washington County is what we had in the numbers. And that's based on current staff numbers, that's what it would take. Now, it might be a little bit less, since you won't have the certain numbers. So there is, that should be a maximum amount that it would take.
That's kind of what I was getting to. Is that number counting what we, you know, we had, we give the incentive and is, is it using the, the number we had prior to that or?
No, the, the incentive amount, $15,000 per each employee that took it, that will come out of fund balance, or it will be budgeted in.
No, that's not what I meant. That's not what I meant.
Okay.
I meant, is the 3.3 or 3.4, whichever it is, is that number based on the 30 or so less employees now? Or was it that number?
No. It, it was based on the number before those retired.
Okay.
So there will be, that will be a maximum, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Then the next question is, I, I know it's not going to be a straight line
Right.
percentage, but I know that there's probably teachers that are watching. It's, how's that going to affect me? Is, is there some explanation that we can throw out there that gives somebody just some idea?
I can tell you it has going to affect lots of people. I believe at about step 25 in Sullivan County, you never got a pay raise again until maybe step 30. And it may even have been less than step 25. So teachers, on this new pay scale, if it's approved, each year you will get an increase, step 26, 27 on up. So the teachers on the upper end of the scale, 20 years and above, will get a higher dollar amount than people on the lower end. Because if you compare salary schedules in East Tennessee, it's not the beginning and end, it's on that upper end and, and 20 years and above of, where there's a difference of $12,000 for lots of teachers. So nobody's going to get a $12,000 pay raise, but there will be a significant pay raise for those in, in the mid-year. And it will keep people who are experienced teachers in Sullivan County, staying in Sullivan County instead of switching over after year 20 and trying to go to a city school. Because to be honest, if you can go somewhere and get $12,000 more for your last five years, you're increasing your retirement by $6,000 a year for the rest of your life, because it's a 50%. And that, that's significant when you, when you start looking at that. So this salary equalization thing is something that is dear to my heart, that we need, our teachers need it. And that's step one of this whole plan of trying to get salaries up. And then step two is coming next year of trying to get, do a comparison of support staff. I don't know exactly how theirs compare with other schools, but we, we've got to work on that. And then the coaching supplements. I know the coaching supplements are down low, but before we can do that, we've got to get the teaching salaries up to where we have a base. And so we need to take it a little time, and it needs to be based on solid scientific evidence. And right now, it's, it is. The, that salary equalization thing is, is, is based on the average. And can we catch Kingsport and Bristol? I don't know if we can match them or not, but we're going to make every effort to get the salaries where they need to be. And we're going to make every effort for teachers not to have a reason to want to apply somewhere else. And, and right now, if somebody waves that much money in front of you, you would be tempted to say, go, right, Mary?
Can I ask one more salary related question?
Yes.
Did you, did, was the projected or possible savings from, we included in this cycle? Or would it be the next cycle, since we don't know for sure? Did we, did we make an assumption? Or are we going to wait and see what the actual?
You talking about utilities and stuff of that nature?
Or just, or just the, whatever, you know, the assumption of what we would, what we will save by not maintaining heating, clean, that square footage?
That's not included in any of our projections, because that's such, such an unknown. It's kind of like the sales tax. It's, it's, it's a fluid number. And we did not use that in anything that we did as far as that 3.3 or anything of that nature. Now, hopefully, it will show up in our electricity bill, our utilities next year. But we did not count on that, because it's such a, it's almost an imaginary number, when you start looking at, how much did you save on water? And how much did you save on electricity? But once we get a year or two under our belt with it, we'll, we'll know a little bit about it.
One last question on that with the, with the pay raise, because with the thing that Mr. Luch put up there was a 4% pay raise across the board to all employees. That's in addition to separate with everything else. That's, that's one thing that a lot of people have been asking me, and I'm getting the, the text right away. So I just want to make sure we say that.
The first, the first thing we're going to do, if everything works out, we're going to plug the teachers in on the new professional salary schedule. That's step one. You plug them in on new salary schedule, and then you add 4% on top of the new salary schedule.
Right.
And, and that 4% can cost up to $2 million, if I think if we did our calculations correct. Well, we don't know. We, we're guessing. At, up to 1.9 million, I think was.
I think it's important to remember that everyone, those in the region are getting the 4% too. So if we don't do that, we just take another step backwards.
Yeah. It's fantastic. And like I say, just getting a lot of questions, and I think that makes it really clear, we're going to do this and then that.
And 4% in Bristol is going to be greater than 4% in Sullivan County. So even though we're giving it, they're still going to gain a little bit on us. So we, we can't, it's like maintenance of buildings, we can't give up on it. We can't say we're building, new building, do nothing to it. We can't get these salaries up to where that we're talking about, and then not try to maintain it on down the road.
So even on the lowest end, I mean, I know that it's, it's really focused on the higher end, which I understand completely. And that's, I mean, you value longevity. But even on the, the intro, introduction levels, they're still going to get significant, I mean, what, 6%, 7% most likely. I mean, I know you can't put a number on it, but it's still going to be, but it's going to be a gradually increases more and more through the 20s.
When you look at Sullivan County's teacher salary schedule right now, I think there's supposedly 30 steps in the salary schedule. But what you find is that there's several places where you, the step is the same, like step maybe 15 through 20, the salary stays the same. So the only raise that those teachers were getting on a yearly basis would be whatever percentage we gave. Under the new proposal here, each year you are getting a step. Now, it may not mean getting an amount up. It may only be $700 a year, but $700 is $700. So it's, it's, it's fairly significant. And.
Thanks for clarifying. Like I say, that was just like I'm getting blown up over here.
Well, no, that's, that's those questions. I think, I think now's the time for, to ask them.
Yeah, that was good. Thank you.
And keep in, keep in mind, you saw the projected increase in insurance of retirement, 2.5% in insurance. In many cases, some of those 25-year employees, 25 and up, even if we gave a raise, actually didn't see an increase because of that. So.
Thanks.
Any further questions or discussion on budget? Again, we will continue to work on this, and we'll be providing you information as it, as it becomes available. And although we can't recommend the date now, I do anticipate that we'll probably need to have a call meeting, probably sometime in the month of May, to, to consider this. So just know that we'll continue to work very hard toward our, our budget. And we hope that there will be some sort of hold harmless legislation passed. And I'll just say one more thing about that. One of the, the questions, you know, that's, that's being addressed as this is being discussed in Nashville, is, you know, for how long will you be held harmless? So in other words, in another year, will you get a double hit if you have additional enrollment loss? So those are some things to pay attention to moving forward as, as you consider budgets in future years. Okay. All right. If, if that's, if that's all, I'm, I'm, the last item on the agenda this evening is consideration of mask provisions in Sullivan County. And so I'm going to apologize in advance. I've given you lots and lots of information that has been put together in the last couple of days. We will be asking the board for some action on Tuesday, but we'll be updating this information as it becomes available to us for the board's consideration. So there is a, on your agenda, if you click on the agenda item where it says mask requirement information, I have prepared for you a memorandum that has several, several links in it to articles and other documents. And I, I know that you haven't had a chance to read this. I'm just going to point it out. I'm not going to read this to you this evening, but I'm just going to reference this as I give you an overview of this issue. And so I'm going to start by going back to the beginning of this year. As you know, we, we began the year with a framework for the safe reopening of schools. That, that's back when we were first into this. But we did provide a revised plan. As the EpiCurve data moved away from us, we had to rework that. And this board on the 11th of November approved a framework for a safe opening, and there's a link there that does provide guidance and provision for masks to be worn in schools and at school events, based on that guidance. And I think it says whenever we're in a yellow and red zone. So you have that piece in place. This past week, Governor Lee, as you know, announced Executive Order Number 80, that all COVID restrictions would be lifted in the state. And the, therefore, the provision that allowed county mayors to have local mask mandates. And so subsequent to that, Mayor Venable has said that he will not renew the Sullivan County mask mandate, which expires, I think, tomorrow. So you've got those two things. In Governor Lee's address, he did not reference any impacts about the operation of schools. And that left a bit of an information void across the state. So lots of school folks tried to, in quick order, determine what the meaning of that was, what it meant for public schools, since it was not specifically addressed. And then after the press conference, the governor's office did say that the governor's executive order 80 did not apply to local school districts. In essence, that it remains a local decision, as it always has. And there's an, there's an article there from Chalkby that goes into that detail, that reports on that from, from information. So as you know, we're members of, I'm a member of TOS, the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents, is the professional organization for directors and, and superintendents, as well as the Tennessee School Board Association is the organization that supports school boards. So both those organizations and have, went to work to try to provide some support for school systems. Chuck Cagle, who is known to, to us, also is a consultant for TOS. And he, I have provided the guidance that he has set. Basically, school, he's recommending that school boards take some sort of action at this point. And he has suggested that, that you make a month-to-month decision, the best of which would be a policy. We do not currently have a policy. The then TSBA has sent out a survey yesterday to Ms. King, to board secretaries, and you have that information. And school systems are responding to that. They were asked a question, does your district have a mask policy in place? And if yes, do you plan to implement it to the, to this year? So again, that, we have shared what we have. We'll continue to update that through to Tuesday, so that you have that information available to you as, as well. But to Mr. Cagle's recommendation, he's referenced TCA 492203, that if you're, if the board will have a mask requirement even for the balance of this year, which is three weeks for us, that the board take action to do so. So we have weekly calls, two weekly calls with our Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Schwinn. We did not hear anything about this until the governor's announcement. But on Wednesday, in response to that, Commissioner Schwinn spoke to the issue. And then Dr. Morgan McDonnell, who was with the Tennessee Department. And then Dr. Morgan McDonnell, who was with the Tennessee Department of Health, spoke to the issue and basically reaffirming, clarified that it is the prerogative of local school boards to address this issue and that the executive order did not pertain to schools. She did further state that the Tennessee Department of Health agrees with the Center for Disease Control's guidance. And again, you have a link there to the operation strategy where it does recommend the, the use of, a universal and correct use of masks for students. Also yesterday, we, we have moved our health department calls to every other week on the second and fourth. So we had that meeting yesterday. We discussed that with our local health department. And they do concur with the Tennessee Department of Health and the CDC's to require masks for the balance of the year. So trying to provide you as much information on all sides of the issue, I have given you lots of information there to assist in making a decision. And so I would just point out some of those. At this point, any, any person who is 16 and older have, have access to vaccines. And we, so we actually have some 16-year-olds who are fully vaccinated because they had their first shot and then they had the three weeks in between and they had their two weeks past that. However, any of our students that are age below 16 have not had any opportunity to receive a COVID vaccination and will not prior to the end of the school year. But there are clinical trials for the Pfizer vaccine. And we are told that possibly sometime in May, that, that the Pfizer vaccine may be approved for children who are age 11 or 12 and I'm not sure, up, up. So currently, the only vaccine for 16-year-olds is the Pfizer. It's possible that the Pfizer could also be approved for age 11 and up. If that's true and that becomes available before school starts in the fall, you could have essentially middle school and high school students eligible for vaccine. That's what we don't have. So currently, the protections for children under 16 include masking, distancing, and hand cleansing. So just a few thoughts, lifting the ma, the mask requirement may result in higher instances of infections among students who are not yet vaccinated. Generally, our students have complied well, according to our principals, with mask requirements with few exceptions. On the health department call, they gave some statistics that I have shared with you. I decided this time to just work them into this since I was giving you this anyway. And I wanted you to have all this information in one place. So in Sullivan County, currently, they reported yesterday that the positivity rate for COVID is 13.6, while the positive rate in the state is at 5.5. Sullivan County is in the red zone and there's a link on there to the, the document, the county data snapshot. Or you have that in there and it looks like this. I have a copy here, but you have that. And you can go there anytime and get an update. This is current as of today. And if you see at the bottom, it says that we're in the, in the red zone. The school age population infection rates have increased dramatically. So as the older population has become vaccinated, the, the number or percent of total vaccinations have decreased in that age. What we have seen is an increase then in the number and the percentage of school age population. And Dr. May, I did just consult with him today to make sure I had the numbers right. He said that there's been an overall 17% increase in the, specifically in the 10 to 20. They reported 0 to 10 and then 10 to 20. And the 511B strand is evident in Sullivan County. And the comments were that that strand is 50% more effective at transmission than the original strand. That Sullivan County's transmission rate is the highest in the state currently. And that 13% of the contacts with 511D become infected as opposed to about 2% to 3% from the original strand. Some other things to think about, and you'll see this later on, is the enforcement of the mask requirements has, has become significantly more difficult since the governor's announcement. It's, it's, it's harder, especially with older kids, to enforce. So that's a concern. We have a variety of opinions. I know that we've had people reach out on both sides of the issue who will, you know, are asking for a particular decision one way or the other. And there, as we know, there's an express level of fatigue concerning mask requirements because we've worn them all year and we have three weeks to go. I do want to share that Mayor Venable did specifically send a recommendation, an email to me, asking that students not be continued to wear masks. He sent that to me. The, the quarantine requirements, this is a document that's linked there too. Releasing cases and contacts, this is from the CDC, are still in force. We, this is a change in the county. So the, the standard, of course, is 14 days for quarantine. The health department has agreed to shift that to 10 days. And that students or anyone could return from quarantine on the 11th day if they are symptom-free. And then additional provision is after day seven, with a negative PCR antigen test and symptom-free, they could return from quarantine. So today, we had a meeting with our principals. Our nurses were trained on that, so that is in effect now. So that's, that's, I wanted to call your attention to that change. And I already mentioned that TSBA sent out a question asking board secretaries to respond. We did survey our principals. We had, you know, I basically just asked them two questions. And that is, you know, do you, do you believe that Sullivan County schools should require masks for the balance of the school year? An overall percent of 57.9 said no. 42.1% said yes. And there are comments there that are shared too. What I can tell you is that the older of our students, the more negative they were. So the more, in other words, the majority of elementary would like to keep the mask mandate. It's split in middle school and then in high school, you know, that's, they'd rather just drop it. So you have that. Some very good and thoughtful comments. Basically, if you read it, the ones who, if I could summarize, principals are saying that, you know, they, they think it's, it's best to do it, but as the older kids, it's become very hard to manage. So you have that information. So I do bring you a recommendation that based on the fact that our kids 16 years of age and under have not been vaccinated and that the CDC, the Tennessee Health Department and our local health department recommend keeping masks for three weeks, I would recommend for your consideration that we would stay the course for the balance of the school year for three weeks. And so again, I will, I will give you every bit of information that I get in any direction, you know, in support of or against, you know, the idea. But it's, it, we are placed in a very bad position. And so I, I want you to have the information that you need to make the best decision. So I know that I've hit you with lots of information and I know, I hope that you will take, I know you will take time to, to read all the linked documents. I tried not to litter it with irrelevant information and material. But I think you'll find the, the information that's linked here all in one place to be very helpful. And it does give you a balance of, of information to aid you in making your decision this coming Tuesday. So I'm going to stop talking and see if you have any questions or you may have some comments that you want to make.
So you're bringing for your recommendation that we continue with wearing masks for the rest of the school year?
Yes, sir. And I, I mean, I would, I would just say, you know, Mr. Cagle has said, moving forward, he thinks it should be a monthly decision.
I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
So any discussion? Can't vote tonight? Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to just be blunt. I'm, I'm going to be absolutely against this recommendation. I'm ready for this to end. And I've been, I've talked to a lot of faculty in the last couple of days that feel the same way. In fact, I'll go a step farther. I would like to rescind the protocol for reopening. I counted no less than 19 references to the mask in that document. I read it all last night. And that's, that's the direction I'm, I'm headed in. It's what I'm hearing. And.
Other comments?
I won't be here next week, so. I get, this is, I mean, this is, this ain't good either way. I'm not going to. I don't know if I'm for or against the mask. I've got kids in school. I've heard from teachers that want to finish it out. And I understand why. They got, what, 14 days left at school? We went the whole year with masks. What would 14 more days hurt? To possibly keep somebody from catching COVID, last 14 days before they go into summer. Probably make people mad, some of the teachers, but I would support finishing out the year with the mask just to give what teachers that want it a little more comfort. Even our parents that still want this, even myself, just knowing that my kids will have it and it's a little extra protection for them and for my family when they come back home, so. Either way, somebody's mad, somebody's happy. But at the end of the day, we've made them wear them all year except for, we're talking 14 days now. 14 more days isn't going to hurt these kids. Both of mine, it's sad, but even when you walked into a restaurant, a gas station somewhere, they've got it down. They pull it right up and it don't bother them a bit. And we can, we actually started going out to eat and my little eight-year-old, we sitting there eating. And she just kept her mask on because she said, "I'm not hungry." And I said, "Well, you can take your mask off." She's like, "Dad, I'm used to it. It don't bother me no more." Our kids are used to it, so why not finish the year out 14 more days? And have a little bit of protection for our kids.
I guess, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I was just going to say, any other comments?
I don't think it's a, a big surprise, but I'm, I'm not for the masks at all. I think that we need to go ahead and drop them. I think before, the president, I mean, the, the governor says we had to have them. Our mayor said we had to have them. We followed that guidelines. We followed that guidance. Now they're saying we don't have to have them. I don't see why we would continue putting that on there. I think that people, if they choose to, your kids can still wear them. The teachers that want to, they can still wear them. We're not saying we're not going to allow masks. I just think having a mask mandate is really not the right direction to go. Especially, I mean, our principals are telling us 57, almost 58% says, "No, we're done." I think that kids are already going to be confused because parents at home that don't like the mask have already told them, "Yay, the governor changed the rule. We don't have to have masks." And now they're thinking they don't have to mask on Monday. But they're still there. I mean, I've already heard from teachers that said they're having that conversation with kids. Well, no, our, it's still there. So I, I don't see why we would consider or why we would, as a group, decide that we're going to be more restrictive than our health department. I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of ironic that they're saying that there's all these problems, but they recommended it to the mayor and the mayor is the one that says no mask mandate. So it, it doesn't make sense to me that they would say, "Yeah, but..." So I don't see why we would continue the mask mandate. Not for the mask mandate, so I don't.
Dr. Cox, did I misunderstand? Because Mr. Arson's comment, either I misunderstood something or maybe I misinterpreted what he said. Our health department said they recommend the mask mandate, correct?
You're correct. That, for school age children, yes.
Right. And I get what Mr. Arson's saying. He's saying the mayor was in consultation with them and made the decision not to extend it. But I just wanted to clarify, the health department recommended to continue it through the end of the school year, correct?
That, that's correct. And if I may just add one thing, I, and I certainly can't speak for the health department, but my understanding is that they are in support of not renewing the mask mandate for adults because they've been vaccinated and for everyone who, that 16 and up has had the opportunity now to be fully vaccinated.
Sure. Okay.
But Mayor Venable did send you an email recommending no mask mandate, right? I want to clarify that.
He did, yes.
He did, right?
Yeah.
And I'm of the opinion that they need to be optional. If someone wants to wear them, they wear them. And if they don't want to, they don't wear them. And I guess that's obvious even looking at the board tonight. I mean, it's, and I have no strong feelings either way. But I like freedom of choice and I agree with Mark that the governor at one time said, "Wear masks." The mayor said, "Wear masks." And honestly, I used that as a reason many times to say, "We're going to follow the rules," and I am a rule follower. And now there's not a rule, so there's free choice. But that's just an opinion. We don't vote tonight.
Mr. Chairman, or Dr. Cox, I guess, can you share with us, I must have missed it, the principal results?
Yes, you, you actually have that. That's linked in your document too. And I, I can, let's see, I may be able to share this.
57%, I think.
Yeah, hang on one second.
Okay. I, I heard that, but I just want to make sure I was hearing the right thing.
And so there were 19 responses to that, correct, Dr. Cox?
There, there are. Let me, let me, so, so again, there, there were 19 responses. There, 26% were middle school, 21% high school, 52% were elementary school. The question was, do you believe Sullivan County schools should require masks for the balance of the school? We did talk about it in the meet, I alerted them that I was going to ask them this question. And so 57.9% said no to the question. 42.1 said yes to the question. There were a total of 11 responses. I would encourage you to read the responses because they're, they're, some of them are qualified yeses and qualified no's. So, but I think the, the insight that they've provided is very thoughtful.
My only contacts have been from high school principals. I have had some high school administrators, put it that way, who said it would be very difficult to enforce, especially since the governor has removed it and the mayor has removed it and would create all kinds of issues for them there. And I understand that.
Okay, there. I was successfully getting it on the screen. So if you can, again, I'll just go back. And then the, the comments that I'll just leave, I don't, I won't have you read all of them, but you have them. They're linked in this document so that you can, that you can look at them. Other, do you, do you have any questions for me? Other comments from board members?
Everybody needs to vote your conscience and if the time comes on Tuesday.
I guess I do have one question. I mean, as it, as it stands now, it would take a majority action to actually change that because that's in our protocol, correct? So it would take four votes to change it?
Yes. So you, you do have, you, you have a document that provides guidance and direction that, that the board voted on in November that says when we're in yellow or red, that, that masks are to be worn. So Mr. Hughes is, with his recommendation, you know, he's expressed that. I do think he's correct that if you, if your desire is to not have masks anymore, I think you would need to. I think you would need to repeal the guidance that you voted on back in November for the school year in addition to saying that you, you wouldn't support them.
My, I, I was just trying to understand procedurally, given, I didn't, you know, we'd need a majority regardless of how many people are here. Okay, thank you.
I guess to add on to what Matthew said there, I'm sorry, Mr. Spabens.
No, no, I was, I was.
He's Matthew.
Oh, I don't care. I get called worse than I do.
With, with the return to, with our plan that we have in place, it was directed by the governor and some of his executive orders. Since those executive orders are gone, that plan either way is going to have to be removed, right? Because they're saying, even Chuck Cagle's saying, you need to come up with a plan. And most likely, it's going to be something different.
His advice really is that you should have a policy, which is why TSBA has reached out. And so Knox County, I think, is the only one, Ms. King is, that has said that they have a policy that's responded, so as, as we get more. But, you know, we were asked to put together, we, we did our plan really before we were required to, but then they said, "You need to have a plan. You need to come up with a CLP as well." So we had an initial one. It was revised when the, because we connected, if you recall, in the, in the first plan, everything was connected to that Epi curve. And then the state stopped supporting that. So we just, we talked about the color zones. So what has become kind of the standard is, was the White House and the CDC has adopted that. So as I shared with you, Mr. Arson, in, in that one document, it's, it's updated, I think, daily. It tells you what county is in what color zone. So my, my, what I would say to you is if, if this board's wish is to not have masks anymore, that you would need to repeal the guidance that you have in place that requires masks. And then you would have, I would, I think to be safe, you'd, you know, taken affirmative vote that you don't want to have masks for the balance of the year. If, other, other, on the other end of it, if you, you could direct that the policy committee come up with one. But the guidance would still be there for masks unless you repeal it, I believe.
And just, just to be clear about what the Knox County policy, I mean, in their comment, they say that they're going to have a meeting tomorrow morning. And so they may repeal exactly, and this was, this was something they put in place a long time ago.
Right. So that's, I mean, like I said, we were just put in a terrible position without any forewarning. And so we're working as hard as we can to give you all the information on all sides of the issue. We'll continue to do that and I'll update that. And probably what I'll do, since you have this link, I'll just update this memo with most current information. And this, that way you don't have to look in multiple places.
Anything else? You have on your table or desk in front of you some tentative dates for the board meetings. And I know that there are some conflicts already. There should be a chart there. But if you look at those real quickly, just to see, has everybody got theirs? The June 3rd meeting, Mr. Gilmore has class on that night. He teaches a class on that night. Is there any way we can move that to June the 1st on a Tuesday? Now we, you okay? Everybody look and see if you're, I know, that's the night that Christie has scheduled the BOE picture for the group. And we need to do, get that picture, some of it for historical purposes, but I think it's important to go ahead and get that done. So if we can move that meeting to June the 1st, that's a Tuesday. And if that doesn't work, we could look at moving it to June the 10th on the next Thursday. No, so you have, you still have Thursday, don't you? So we could, we could look at moving it to June the 8th if that doesn't work.
I'm good with the first four, eight.
I'm too.
I might have to look at my schedule because I kind of planned everything around Thursday stuff, so I'm not real sure.
Okay. Can, can you send us word? I know you're not going to be here Tuesday night. Can you send us word for Tuesday?
Yeah.
Of which will work best for you? And we, we can finalize it on Tuesday night.
You said the first or the 10th, is that what you said?
No, we can't do the 10th because Randall's got class that night. Tuesday, the 8th or, or Tuesday the 1st.
Okay.
Are you good, Matthew?
I can do either one. The 8th would be better, but I can make either one work.
Okay. Does 8th good for everybody else? Let, let's set it tender to June the 8th. Paul, you let us know on yours. And once you let us know, we'll let Christie know about scheduling a picture for the, for me. And we can look at those others a little bit later. Did you want to talk about doing two meetings on July the 8th? Yeah, just a second here. The question is, do you want to do a work session on June the 24th? And meet on July the 1st, which I don't think anybody wants to meet on July the 1st. That's close to the 4th because of the, the holidays there. But what we were thinking is you might want to look at doing it on, moving it to July the 8th and doing a joint session on, work session and board meeting.
Move the June 24th to the 8th and then the July 1st to the 8th also?
Yeah, put them both on July the 8th. Does that work good for, okay, let's go ahead and make that a joint. I don't really like the joint ones because sometimes we have so much to do in the work session. But let's go ahead and do that July the 8th, work session and regular meeting. And we have our legal conference in Gatlinburg, I think, July the 16th, don't we? How many are going to that? See, Mark's not going to and Paul, are you going? Okay, so we're going to, we'll cancel the meeting on July the 1st.
I'm just curious, but is that still going to conflict with Randy one more?
He's just, he's finished. He's finished with it. Thank you. So we're cancelling July the 1st. We're also cancelling June the 24th. And so if we're good, we're going to adjourn into our, after a 10-minute break, into our legal conference, Attorney Court Privilege Conference or whatever. Upstairs and 2:12.
Our legal marathon.
Yes. I'm glad you said after 10 minutes.